So I would take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
I'll second it.
All right. Um, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye. We've got an agenda. Good morning, Rich.
Morning. Uh, the striping, the roadway striping project was done. That was done maybe late last week. I'll get the annual report turned in this week. I'm gonna start working on some, okay, we got a paving project for next year. I gotta get that started and done and then uh. Today they're gonna try to do some, they got ten days left on the dogwood project. They got some shoulder ring to do yet, so, so I'll be getting that done here this week.
They striped that into?
It'll be striped also, so they got the shoulder and striping to do. Since we awarded the dogwood project, I don't know. We'll get in there. I, I don't know that we'll get in there this fall yet, but we'll see what they, I guess it all depends on if they can make the bottom coverage quick enough. I haven't had any contact with the contractor yet, so. Anyway, that's what we got going on there. Um, I told Colton today, we need to, we've been talking with um. With Elliot to see if. If he's got equipment that can swing those things around, um, or we need to get a crane, so I think we can. I told the supplier, we can take all three of those pipe. Like he quoted me sixty-eight thousand dollars for three pipe. And we can drop them off. They can roll them off the trailer and then some, some truckers don't like that, but I think they said they could. So even if we draw, roll it off in that area, the bigger thing is on four hundredth was. To get that, that individual in and out during construction, so. But I think we can probably. Yeah, we can try and get the deck off in a day. Then hopefully if we've got enough stuff stuck, we can swing the other one. I'm get, I'm supposed to be getting full line elevations. Uh, from the consultant yet, so we can get that set up, so we can start planning. Yeah, if I wanna get it done soon.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Some guys will appreciate that too. I know we're still three, four weeks up on harvest now, you know, but.
That's gonna come fast.
It'll come fast.
It's gonna really fast.
See, I don't know what the best opportunity, uh, alternative is for that guy that lives.
Yeah, I don't know either. I mean.
I mean. You can park a car on the side of the bridge, but you can't walk across if there's a big, you know.
Right, if we've got a, if the deck is gone, you can't get to the car anyway, so. It'd be nice if we could do everything.
Well, there's that too, so hopefully it wouldn't be an emergency, so I don't know if you, it'd be a situation where we.
I don't know how you're gonna, you know. I.
The only thing I can say is you put them up someplace for a couple of days.
But I, I, I've gotta check with. I think Lynn was trying to get ahold of the individual just to talk to him about scheduling and things like that. Maybe he's got something planned.
He could be going for, I don't know, the guy.
Oh, we're working on that. Okay.
So, sounds good.
Any else for it? Yeah, thank you. Uh, drainage. Discussion of the MOU with joint drainage districts. Now, that's.
Yeah, so Winnebago reached out to me. And she's going to do it with. Some of her surrounding counties. Cause we talked about this down at our last meeting. All the strange clerks got together in Fort Dodge. And we talked about. Might be kind of a good idea, just, I mean, we all kind of know what we all do with each other anyways, and when there's major decisions, we do do joint board meetings. Um, even small things like we always, us clerks contact each other and we let you guys know. Even when there's small projects or spraying or anything like that going on. But she drafted up this one, then another county uses, so I didn't know if it's something that you'd be interested in, and if it is. And if we sign with Winnebago, I made up a. Basically the same thing and changed Cero and Mitchell two. If they wanna do that, and then I listed the shared districts in it and then the percentages of which latals.
That's probably just a better paper trail, you know.
So it's just like, or do you?
Yeah. Yeah.
If everyone's all right with that.
I think.
I told her I'll let her know, then she's gonna talk to her board about it tomorrow, cause they made on Tuesdays.
Okay.
So if it's something that we wanna do. We can do it next week.
I was gonna say we just do, but I, I think we're, I mean, I think it's a great idea, so just take and discuss it, and then we can approve it next week.
Yeah.
Do you know if the attorneys looked at those?
Um, well, I sent it to Grieve. And he said he sees nothing that is concerning to him, so.
Okay. Yeah, I guess it's kind of a consensus that we would, we'd be all right with it, so.
And I can email it to you guys, you can look at it.
If they are too, then we can just uh. Little bear, we'll sign it first, we're not afraid. If that's what it takes, so. Yeah, I think it's something we just need to do, keep up with, so.
Yeah, I'll uh get a hold of Chris today and then let her know so she can talk to the board tomorrow, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, discussion and possible action, the reclass of DD seven and DD three twenty-seven. What is DD three twenty-seven? I haven't heard that number before.
I did some digging, and three twenty-seven is twenty-seven and thirty-one that combined it back in the.
Three oh six, was it?
Eighties, yeah.
Okay.
And apparently it's three twenty-seven.
Okay.
So the map, it says twenty-seven, so.
It's on record, so.
And then all through the files, I dig, the book says three twenty-seven, so I'm like, oh.
Yeah, okay.
So we definitely need that updated with Beacon, especially if we end up doing maybe a reclass, then we'll have updated.
Yeah.
Maps and stuff like that, but seven um needs to apparently, so. Bolton Mank was working on seven, we'd gotten some bills. And then we found out that there is a non-existent lateral, is the lateral that they are actually doing the research and work on with the railroad. And I don't have a schedule for that, so we're gonna have to reclass seven, and then. Three twenty-seven, AK twenty-seven dumps into seven. So, and that one doesn't have a common outlet.
Right.
Scheduled for it, so it at least needs a common outlet schedule.
Okay. Sounds like we just gotta bring it up to date, huh?
Yeah. Instead, it probably wouldn't be something that we wouldn't get started on until it's on ourselves.
That's, that's fine.
So you want a motion to engage?
Yeah. Take a motion to engage Bolton, make three class DD seven and DD three twenty-seven.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
I'm certain.
All right, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Both? All right. Go ahead and move forward to that one, Val. And it's just one claim, I think. Bolton make, right?
No.
No claim more.
It's assessments, uh, two districts own another district common outlet.
Oh, that's what it's got there. Their motion approved drainage claims, just. Get their second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on? Hearing none, all favor I? Aye. Both? Right. Uh, DD two, H two Beaver Dam was.
Yes.
Have you got them removed yet?
Um, so this is the one that they had the two Beaver Dams, one north of. Four fiftieth and one south of four fiftieth on Ironwood. Went in, removed them, went south of four fifty, it's back again. Um, so he can get out there and he can get that removed.
Yes.
And I called. Two people that I knew of that do the beaver trapping, and then have the nuisance license, so we're gonna have to wait until season. But maybe get someone out there to get. Those particular beavers that keep building this one.
They keep building.
Trying to trap nuts, yeah.
They're gonna be able to, they could chase down, they're up for two, three times, but.
Well, this'll be the second time, so maybe they'll.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll scurry down, down road.
Just cleaned out all along down there too.
Their motion to approve the work order?
So.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, so all favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Very. That, it Val, any else? Derek. Thank you very much. Uh, take a motion to approve claims.
I will make a motion to approve the claims.
I'm certain. Okay, is there any discussion on it? Hearing done, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Claims are approved. Reports? Eric for both? Yep. Motion by Mark, your second?
My second.
Yeah. All favor I? Aye. There. Uh, any payrolls? Changes or eligibility? Uh. Dispatcher? Is that right, Dan?
Yes.
And it's a new dispatcher, so motion to approve Sydney is uh, the payroll sheriff's office.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Both? There is.
Back up. It was just a second. Yeah. She was gonna look into it too, see if there was a work order on this. Rich and Rich got the email, she got the email, I got the email. Um, DD seventeen, there was a large main that blew out, um. Doug Petersburg. Um, he's got his farm named Century Act, actually fixed it, and they were requesting that. The owner was requesting we pay for the fixing of the tile, which is no problem, I don't think, even though I don't know if there was a work order on it or not, it doesn't really matter. He's also requesting that we replace the dirt. And we've never done anything like that. It was a pretty large blowout, if you look and you get time to look.
I think I've just heard it, and it was pretty deep.
Yeah. He says it's about ten foot deep, and it, I don't know how much of the main it took out when it went.
But shouldn't you be talking to people before it happens?
Well, the work order should have been done.
Well, the repair is fine.
Repair is fine, it's just, where would you find dirt to replace? I mean, generally when I have a blowout, I scrape it off the farm and fill it back in. Even if it's a colony main, I mean, you know.
Right.
But. Maybe that's part of the reason that. Piece has soaked it in on DD twenty-three down there, that little spot. But yeah, I don't know where we get it from, you know, that's.
The only thing we could do is if you.
Bring a black dirt out of a ditch somewhere, which we need a lot of.
And. It's, you know, that black dirt. Could be used somewhere else for us.
Well, I, I know, I know.
I don't know, I mean, if it's, if there's, if there's somewhere down the line from that location where there's black dirt.
I just wanted to discuss it, cause I, eight years I've been in here, you never replaced dirt on a tile blowout that I can remember.
The one we did, I would anything like that was a complete washout on that storm was over here.
I know, like a, yeah.
Peterson did. Some work uh, oh by Patterson, John Patterson's. Or Larry Patterson.
Oh, there were that, yeah.
We had that storm, and that's washed. Whole bunch of that main out.
Yeah.
And we put intakes into them.
Cause they hauled it all out of manly, I believe. To bring dirt back in, cause they, there was nothing, it was all gone, I mean, it was all washed down the line, but that was a huge.
Right.
Turned into.
That was a little bank gone.
Yeah, it was, yeah, ditch bank and everything like that.
Well, where it scoured back in to go back into, yeah, there was a lot on there.
So, that's was a storm thing, oh, kind of all debris, and how much dirt are we talking? Anybody?
I imagine a couple pretty good dump truck loads at least, you know, I mean. I, and which is a lot to scrape off your farm.
Right.
It's almost. I mean, it was probably ten foot deep, ten, at least ten, twelve feet wide, the way it looked, was caved in and sucked away and. I mean, it's, it obviously would be something I would assume they wouldn't wanna do until after harvest, but I would think, didn't really say.
I'm assuming he's requesting the district to pay for the dirt, right?
Correct, I mean, it would be the district that have to pay for it all.
They're doing the deal, so.
They pay for the tile repair plus hauling the dirt.
Usually don't have a. Scour on that big, but, or suckhole that big, but.
Yeah. I mean, I'd have to, I would assume at some point Doug will bring in the bill, and we can ask him what he thinks it's gonna take, I mean. I, I would hope he turned it in anyway, or will he?
I guess I can do some look around, see if we've got any black dirt, I just don't know where.
Right.
Most of our black dirt usually goes back into the field that's adjacent to it.
Correct.
I mean. I don't know if anybody's got stockpile black dirt around right now or not, that I can think of either.
I might know where there's some.
So I was gonna say, I mean, sometimes there is some around, but.
There's some around.
Yeah, just getting it loaded, getting it there. So. I don't know, maybe we just have. Colton or Lynn or somebody go out there, take a look at it and see.
Check into it, see what size hole it is, what they think it'll take, and then. I'm getting touch on Doug Petersburg, just, he's the one doing the work, and, and maybe it's closer to the road than I think, you can get in there now, it's decent, I mean. I don't know how much damage they did, it was in July, they went out there and fixed the tile, so. I see, so. Look into it.
All righty. Moving on. Uh, you looking at license?
Nope.
Tax abatement?
Yeah. Remember those um, the purchases you made?
Yep.
Yeah, um. You know how taxes are in arrears and all that good stuff, so there was still value on my ear, so it ends up. Make. Producing property taxes, so um, I just wondered if you wanted to abate those, there's still drainage, of course. Um, there's.
Taxable ground and non-taxable ground, and you still have in the arrears.
So it, it's, it won't happen again, but um. We have taxes that. I mean, just be paid, I mean, well, I guess you're paying the other end, the other authorities too, but.
Right, right.
Um.
It's supposed to do a business, right?
Yeah.
So, I guess if anyone would like, is there a motion to approve the tax abatement for the properties we've purchased?
Well, I think we ought to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve the tax abatements for those purchases.
Motion second, any other discussion on? Hearing none, all favor I?
Aye.
Aye. Both? They are abated. A ground discussion. What do you need to know?
Okay, you better all, don't you?
We had the discussions. Way back when we were selling that ground. We didn't, I guess, formally take any action, I thought.
We had dreams right of all of.
I thought there was paperwork that.
Yeah.
Ryan signed with Jeff, but evidently I'm wrong.
Um, but that's what the resolution.
Statement.
Yeah.
And it was. It says in the resolution, and I mentioned that that day, this is all pending the sale of the property. And it says right in the resolution, but in the event the land is sold, Worth County and Brian Nelson have negotiated and agreed to an amended contract. That'll amend or terminate the existing hay lease and compensate Brian Nelson. We were waiting. It was all pending the seller property, when we worked this thing out, that property hadn't been sold yet.
Right.
No.
So it was, we had to wait till that, all the transactions got done there, but as far as the, as far as the amount goes and the whole works, I got that all down.
Right. Yeah, you, we discussed it during the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Who knows?
Wait, we, that rose sixty-six hundred, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We went with the. And Brian said that hay was worth between a hundred and hundred and twenty-five dollars a bale. We figured out how many bales he got, which is one point eight, we decided to go with the lower amount and two bales. Per cutting, which is six bales an acre, and there's eleven acres. Comes out to sixty-six hundred dollars, basically right now, what we gotta do is cut a check to Brian, because it's all taken. And this property sale is all went through.
But we don't have the agreement.
Right, well, and then we gotta have Jeff. Do a new farm lease, because. His old farm lease is going till October thirty-first to twenty-five, so that five point five acres. Is gonna go until October thirty-first to twenty-five at a hundred dollars an acre. So it'll just say five point five acres on it. At uh, five hundred and fifty dollars until October thirty-first to twenty-five, at which time then we'll write a new contract. Right, makes sense, and all we gotta do is take. The area. The description of the area underneath the water tower and cross it out of here and leave the bottom part, which is that five point five acres. Jeff's gotta do that, so.
But with that resolution, we agreed on it, that would adjust that contract, because we had to make sure we were able to amend or get out of that contract before we sold.
Right, that's right. And we weren't gonna do this unless the property got sold.
Definitely.
So, and it gives also. It authorizes you to enter into a proposed contract or contract accomplished the same. That was the resolution, you.
But did Brian sign off on anything?
No.
And wouldn't that be an important part of?
That's why we have to have. Jeff put together a contract and have Brian sign that new contract, but he's already agreed to it.
Yes.
Should have been done way back when the property got sold.
Process.
Yep.
So we just need to have Jeff amend that contract, get Brian to sign the amended contract, bring it back us, and pay him.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
That's what brother would need.
We're not gonna write a new contract, we're just gonna take eleven acres out.
Yep, amend that contract to match the other. Acres down the road.
Yep.
I'll put that in motion.
Uh, I think let's just give to Jeff the approval.
Yeah, we've already got it in the resolution here on how it works, and it's in your lap.
Yep, so we just need to get Jeff to amend that agreement, have Brian sign it, I can sign it, cause that's, I got the approval to sign it.
Yep.
Then we can, then we can pay him.
Okay.
Okay. That work?
Sure.
Picture.
I just want documentation.
Yeah, I know, I, you too.
Well, he's got a, that new, he's gonna sign that new contract, which takes that eleven acres out of there, so.
Yeah. We'll have him do that, probably. After another truth, he's leaving this week, right? Was it this week or last week? Doesn't he leave on this Wednesday, or did he leave last Monday? Oh, this weekend, okay.
This week?
Yeah. Yeah. He's leaving one.
Who's talking to Jeff? I got the survey, do you want that? That's the five point five acres.
I can take it down to him when we're done.
Here, I've got a. I got a copy with the survey on the bond.
Well, okay.
Where'd that go from? Jeff?
No, me. I print my own stuff out. You print off the survey, and then he puts the paper over and print off.
Yeah, you wanna get rid of that?
Yeah, but. After the meeting today, I'll show you what we need to change on there. Okay, so Jeff's not confused.
All right, I'll drop this by the office then, after what I was doing. Okay. Next is. Resolution to approve financial assistance, Manly Junction Railroad Museum project. Um. Brad and Chelsea were in here last week. We had some discussion on, they gave us, we gave a week to figure out what we'd like to contribute. Um. I guess that's where we'll start the discussion before we head into the resolution.
I guess the research that I did on it, you guys have, we've done two cat grants in North County. Joyce with a library and a community center, and Northwood with an activity center. We basically, we gave ten thousand dollars to Joyce, five thousand for each building, they kicked in forty-five thousand from the city. We gave five thousand to the activity center, and then the city kicked in fifty thousand, so basically been doing in the past five thousand dollars. For each one of the buildings. And, and now I, and like, I, like. Manly's kicked in fifty thousand as of last Tuesday night. So they're doing kinda like what Northwood did and what Joyce did. But uh. That's the research I did on it, I wanna know what we did in the past, because we treated the cities the same and the citizens the same on the whole. So. Yeah, I support it, I think we financially should support it as to how much we financially support it, I think it's, you know, a lot worth a lot more to like. The city of Manly being close by there and stuff like that, but.
That's for sure.
It would really help. Economic development if Manly had motels and they had restaurants and that kinda stuff, but.
Right, a little tough.
You're, and you did say last week you're going after five oh one C three, right? They're a nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
We already are, correct.
Yeah, yeah. Already are.
Yeah, so, but.
Um. And I. As far as where the funds come from, I don't remember what we did. Last time, which department they came from, or where they came out of, but I think that's a good use for um, WCBA dollars that we get. As far as. Where to take it from. When you should read, I don't know, it gets those in the general.
It's all gonna come out of the rubber and pot, there's one giant pot with all the money.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter where it comes from.
Right. But last time we spread it out, both Joyce and. Northwood, we spread it out over two years.
That's where we need to start putting some of this money in a fund for that kinda development or these kinda projects, if this cat grants are gonna continue to stay, cause we're gonna get more requests.
Well. Learn from prop motel.
That's one.
Well, probably gonna, they're gonna come after us for the same thing.
Try to finish that up.
You know, so what we do here could affect us to that one too, so. We need, and somebody that I talked to that does cat grants. They said the amount of it, the amount that you contribute makes a difference. But it's really the fact of getting everybody behind it. That's, they like to see that, the more participation you've got.
Yeah, the more support from the communities, counties, the area, the area in general. So. Good.
So I think we ought to do at least five thousand, if not just a little bit more than that. That's my opinion on it, to still be fair to Joyce and.
Yeah.
Northwood and.
And going forward.
And going forward.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna go seventy-five hundred.
But I don't see anything to matter with that.
I'd make that a motion.
Yeah.
Bring in a motion to approve the reso. Resolution with that amount.
Oh, and it came over two years?
You could do a pledge over the course of five years.
Nah, we don't wanna drag it out that long, we will be around.
So for the um, Sarah Ward County pledged one hundred and fifty thousand, over uh, three years.
Well, I assume you're moving this project along as soon as you can, so I mean, running, yeah.
I think we oughta do it over two years.
I do it over two years.
Just like we did the other ones.
Starting in twenty-five or twenty-six.
Well, the other ones started. One, they were done like in May and June, so it didn't start till the next fiscal year, so you probably wanna start with one payment in twenty-six and one in twenty-seven. What do you think of that?
If that works, yeah.
Since it's technically not in our budget.
Right, yeah, there you go. Budget, I'll put it down like that way.
That an issue?
Next budget.
It seemed like an issue all the way ahead, or?
No, it's.
Okay. Okay, so Mark, can you uh? amend your motion for this resolution?
Well, it hasn't been seconded yet, so we're still adding all, adding all this in as we're going, actually.
That's right. Seven-five hundred dollars?
Seven-five hundred dollars over two years.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Starting in twenty-six, FY twenty-six, and then twenty-seven.
Okay. That's the numbers for resolutions, they're second to that. I will second that, okay. Um, and this grant is for, or this is uh. Contribution and support for the uh, yeah, cat grant program through IEDA. All right, we have a motion to second, is there any discussion on it? Hearing none.
So basically, you're gonna do thirty-seven fifty?
Thirty-seven fifty. Gotcha. That's a. Each year.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, low, low bird?
Aye.
So maybe? Hearing none, roll call, low, low bird, I, maybe, I, stones, I. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hopefully everything works out and. We can uh, continue to see growth out there. I think uh, we're still probably gonna start and have the conversation of. Bring that into urban renewal for your other buildings. If we can grab uh, we can just some increment or get some TIF dollars on that. And we'll see, we'll see uh. We'll see taxation for them, so, so I think we could, we could support that, but if we wanna make any other updates to our urban renewal, I think that one's coming. I did talk to the elevator. Um, they don't foresee anything happening there other than the ground storage, so they weren't worried about that parcel. Cause any projects they do, it sounds like they're gonna stay right in town, right on, in their facilities, which is just eighth of a mile up the road, so. I think there's gonna be some possible solar panels, then I think maybe more grain storage or something, something else going on in there in the future. But it's all gonna be right, right at that facility there, so. So, yeah, but I, I think we'll look into that, put that in our urban renewal plan first, it'd be awesome, your future developments, cuz. That's just part of the whole area that, hopefully in the next few years, we see some serious growth and.
We just gotta watch on the clock starts.
Yep, yep. Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
You betcha. Thank you. Uh, anything building and grounds? Not Waterman Project, um, like our last payment just went through in claims, I'm gonna go out today and meet with the meter guy. At ten o'clock and get all our meters measured up, see what's gonna cost to replace all them. Um, some of them are originals from a long time ago. Uh, meters don't get more accurate with age, they get less accurate, so in the long run, uh, it's actually costing us money cuz. Usually when you put your meters in, your bill goes up. Because you're more accurate on the water that's coming through, so uh, we're gonna meet up with that, so then see where the cost is on that, if we can just. Get that in with some of our ARP funds that we have left on this project. I honestly think like seven to ten thousand is probably about it, so. But, and then that'll have everybody upgraded to new.
Taylor be around there? Spins a confusion, I even emailed people about the health, but the number that they've been giving wasn't right. Um, I know Reboots were looking for some well water tests and I called the number one day and left a message and I've never heard back. And it was kind of a time sensitive deal for their onion production. You could hit Taylor up on that, see if you ever got it done, if you happen to see him out there.
I've gotta talk to him anyways.
If you got his number, correct number, good, but I don't have the number. You do maybe forward those numbers on to us so we have.
Cause uh, it was originally Heath to start. Thought all that information was changed to Taylor's, but.
Okay, I don't know, I just, they called one day and they gave, actually I didn't even, I said, I don't have a number, I could probably get it. She said, well, I got this number, so she sent it to me. And I said, I will see if I can intervene a little bit, and I just kept the message and I, so I don't know if they ever got back to them, but I know it's a. It's a time sensitive deal, they gotta prove their water quality is good for what they irrigate and stuff, cuz those onions go to, I don't know, some place that needs proof, so.
Yep, all we have to talk about some other stuff anyway, so.
Did Jason get back to you with a sec? Did he get that second quote on the phones?
No, he's still there. They've had a couple other options they've offered to him and he's. Just wants the same option so that we get apples to apples bids, so hopefully he'll have. That this week, so that he can. We can decide which way to go or which bid to take. And then he should also have. The capital improvement plan from peoples, um, what they think. Capital improvements are gonna need, be needed over the next three to five years. Um, so then when we do rates, that can get figured into it, so that if there's stuff that needs to be upgraded, updated, it's part of the water rates, that's what pays for it, so. So hopefully he'll see that this week and then we should be able to. Put our rates in place within like two weeks after that. Uh, or at least, well, I'll start that, we gotta post it, it's an ordinance or update.
We're closer to what we were two years ago.
Yes, yes, we're almost there, so he just has to get that. Uh, capital improvement thing is the big thing because that's, that's the operational side of what it takes to operate and maintain the thing, so.
Four-year improvement project.
Yeah.
And then what about the um, pipe inventory, cuz October will be here before we know it.
Yeah, I will remind Taylor and Jake of that also cuz they are doing that, and I can, I know, they'll do it. I'm not gonna do it when I'm in there looking at meters today, cuz it's not my job. But they, they said they would do it in October.
I just know it's October.
We shouldn't have any problems out there anyway.
New, it's all new, but it's still, it still has to get put into the, the DNR system.
Anything about that system or anything.
Yeah, no, you don't worry about it, that's, we, cuz they said they weren't gonna do any towns, and we pretty much said, you know, there's like six customers out there. You could probably handle that, and so they said they were gonna do it, so I'll check with them on that to make sure it's completed, so.
Thank you.
You betcha. Anything else? Okay, that's under that, uh, what was that called?
I, I just have the uh, Rural Economic Development Summit on Thursday. And you're all invited, anybody from the public is invited.
Anything else? Anything from Lisa guys? Okay, thanks, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, we just gotta cover people's services later to department head discussion.
Um, could I get copied on that, um? Uh, for Taylor?
Yeah.
Also.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, cuz I, I've been sending emails and I'm not getting.
Probably could use that too, anybody.
And I got a call from your office, I wanna say it was Friday, and it must've been for that same one.
Okay.
You know, that they couldn't get back, and I said, I, I would bring it up to you guys, they've been waiting and waiting.
No, I didn't, I hadn't heard back from them or whether they had an answer, either way, I hadn't heard from anybody, so I was just kinda.
Well, evidently.
And I lost my email, so I couldn't find the number again.
He called Secondary Roads and then she called me.
You probably had the old number, yeah.
And so then I said, well, I'd bring it up to you guys, and I said, I've been sending emails too and I haven't heard a thing, so.
Yeah.
Get it all updated.
Well, Melissa knows, we'll work on that and what I'll do is, if it gets. I've got it all, she'll send it out to everybody at once. I, I said, I've got, I know I've got it all, so.
Make sure we get the, just tell them they sent us the correct update and they can do that, actually, they should build, we should have contact lists.
And I know they were here Friday. Doing our office, have you heard in?
Oh, yeah, shoot, yeah, I did talk to uh, Coley. So uh, underneath there, they did find some black mold. Um, that's not nothing, that's like super wet, super problem, but he said basically it, it probably didn't get dried out. Properly when it all happened. That's why it's set in a little bit, so um, he said, he, he was, to be honest, I just don't know what to tell you because. Um, I don't know if it's just gonna be minor right there, or if it's gonna be everything underneath that floor, he said, next step we could do is an air quality check.
We did that once, didn't we?
I don't remember if they did.
We did like a mold quality check.
I know, we, we did our own.
You guys, okay, I can remember.
And then.
After we had this pipeline.
Yeah, we just did our own, we just went across or.
Did they do that like two years ago?
Well, that's what, that's what, yeah.
Yeah.
They came in and checked for mold and stuff.
Yeah, we had someone come in cuz they had to redo all of our events.
And then they checked it at that time.
And I know, I, I keep trying to keep that um, door closed, but I know there was from that big rain that we had. There was water down there again, you know, and.
One thing he says recommends, we need to put a dehumidifier down there, which is just something we can probably don't get. And I keep that running in there all the time, so it helps keep a lot of moisture out of the basement. But, so I guess that's, yeah, if we wanna do the next step of do another air quality to see if.
Well, I mean, there is some, I mean, it's employee, employee health.
And we could have do the entire building while we're here, if one area is worse than another, you know what I mean, that all, at least. It would isolate areas, so like I said, how did we would've ever known that the ductwork in the sheriff's office wasn't issue, just. Let's have them do the whole building and just see if everything is, if there's one area that's worse than another, you know. So.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, I'll do that, take that step though.
And who would maintain the air conditioner in our, in our office? I've been kinda cleaning it every year. But this year it's really bad.
We use Larson's for August.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if it needs, I don't know how old that is, if it just needs a new, I don't know, it just looks pretty bad.
Thorough inspection probably like.
Yeah, okay.
We could probably have Larson's come in and clean that one.
Is there other ones?
That one in the server room? Clean that, there's two ups in the courtroom, right? Which probably just haven't come to do them all, they can, are they coming to do anything in your office?
One of the tower that needs to be gone through and then are split in the back, or they haven't scheduled anything yet.
So they're all on the same list and they can spend the day or doing that.
Yeah, let's do it all in one shot. Yeah, let's just set it up and do the whole works.
That'll be about time to figure out what to do with the boiler too.
It's a good point, so.
Yeah, it is. I'll give Levi a call then and see if we can get that figured out.
I'm sure it's ready, that's what they have, and you'll go through anyway. Look for furnace, things like that.
And then we need to figure out is, we're gonna have somebody stop like from Larson's once a week or. Check that boiler. Just make sure it's got water.
Yeah, I'll talk with Levi on that too.
Cuz that's basically what it boils down to, just making sure it's got water in it, right?
Yeah, it's for me, I've never, never had a boiler, so. And it's not in a commercial boiler and.
Right, or something from the fifties.
Yeah, and from.
Okay, I'll talk to Levi.
I'm guessing that dehumidifier will have to be put up. Comes in. Somebody doesn't get fried.
Make sure it's large enough so that it.
Do they have them? Over here, across the street?
Probably do, you can probably get it on us, make sure you send.
So it doesn't have to be emptied all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, let's say nobody's gonna dump it, cuz you know, have to know.
Twenties and thirties, and thirties are about the biggest. Yeah, I know last time because of Christ, we ended up going down to Walmart cuz I got them in both our tower settings.
Still walk home.
You need at least a thirty.
Yeah, well, try to take as much out of the basement as we can as a whole, this whole lower level, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Stay on. Any other department head discussion?
We did have our safety action plan meeting last Wednesday. Had a little, had uh, I don't know, was the volunteer fire chief for the Northwood Fire Chief and then. Representative of the Sheriff's Department, um. Home and Health, EMA. Uh, from the. Recorder's office and they, and then uh, anyway, the, the, the first half was kind of this statistical review of. The population, then how we're aging and young kids, all that stuff, and then that, the, the later session was actually going through. What Worth County had for statistical, based on traffic and things like that, um. Things that we can be proactive on, which when we went through uh, several segments of road curves and intersections, we were. Fairly proactive already with the stuff that they had listed, that they said, here's what you should probably do to make things more proactive and like. We did that, we did that, we did that, a lot of it was paint stripes, well, we do that every other year, we. Have updated a lot of our signage and things like that, so we're pretty proactive in some locations because we had reported to them that we had. Done all that proactive stuff, it kicked a lot of segments out of, of their report, but it was more of a statistical versus a visual. Analysis, so when we were meeting with them in the afternoon session, we kind of. Were able to update them on more of the detailed stuff, and so, uh, I think from here, it's. They'll put back, they'll probably add more sections, curves or intersections that. Show up in the queue, I mean, they gave us the top ten or whatever, and uh. Some of it was surprising to me, it's like, this doesn't even have an accident shown at this location and you're prioritizing it, and it's. It's based more on uh, vehicle traffic count than it is other things, so. Uh, but anyway, it was a good turnout, um, got a lot accomplished and we'll probably be waiting for a, a report from them and then once we get. All the information we need, I suppose, be another session of adopting some sort of plan when it's all said and done. Just update on that.
Other department heads? Right, supervisor weekly uh, domain, still working on that one, I did, just have to reach out to. Andrea that works with Chris, I forgot to do that last week, so I do have the number. Hello, Isis, what'd you have last week?
I didn't have any planned meetings last week.
Anything either? Alright. Maybe we should go on a future agenda?
Is it a date for the executive board meeting? This is WWE Executive Board Meeting, eleven thirty, doesn't have a date. We haven't seen a date on that.
No.
That's why I was just curious, I was just looking.
No. Any of you going to the WCTA picnic this week?
Uh, I've got two things I could go to that night, so.
Is that the Thursday?
That's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
What's that?
Wednesday is a busy night.
Well, yeah.
Seven, I think.
Got an invitation, I don't know if I'm going yet or not.
Thursday, you going to the?
Yes. All of that during the day? I thought you were gonna ask about Thursday night.
Yeah, Thursday night.
I have a, I don't know that I'm going to that or not yet. I went to the one last.
No, the pipeline.
The pipeline one.
Am I going to that?
Yeah, yes.
I thought you were asking about the one down in Mason.
Oh, that's summer.
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about Thursday night.
Oh, yeah, Thursday night, yeah.
That's already out there.
Is there enough room in there for that?
They'll find out.
Two fifty, I think.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that's been telling me they're going and wanting representation and so.
It's full, it's full.
Have they asked for?
Parking will be interesting too.
Yeah, yeah. Guess we'll see, I don't know what their capacity is, it should be on the wall somewhere then.
Yeah. Did they clean out that back room? Is it gonna be back there, is it gonna be up front?
I don't even know, I've never been in.
Sure, we're, for sure, what part of the building they said. I guess I'll find out Thursday night.
I got a previous thing, so I can't make it. That's good tempo.
Alrighty. Well, well, nothing else, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, I. Bye, meeting is adjourned.